We will start with a roll call.
President Abbas.
President.
Vice President Martin is running late. Alder Carter. Try again, I believe you're muted.
Present.
Alder Bennett is running late. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Present.
Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Lummer is excused and Alder Weheli.
Present.
Alright, we have four.
Perfect, and also want to acknowledge Vice President Martin is also here. You're present, perfect. With that, we will move forward with the approval of the minute. Can I please have a motion?
Move of the minutes. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments on the minutes? I don't see any hand raised, so I will consider as unanimous approval. Move forward to the public comment. Madeline, do we have a public comment at this time?
Uh, no one is registered for item number one, public comment, but we do have one registrant for item number six, uh, who would like to speak.
Perfect. Thank you. Disclosure and recusal. Any member wish to disclose or accuse? I do not see any hand raised. With that, we will go to agenda item number two, legislative file number 67082, alternative amending section thirty-three point zero one, seven of medicine general ordinance to permit subunit to remove officer and to schedule agenda item. Can I have a motion, please?
Move, uh, recommendation to approve.
It's motion is moved. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Perfect, it's moved and seconded. Any question for the staff? Or comments? I will just raise my hand and I'm gonna propose a small amendment. And I'm also gonna send that amendment to all the CCEC orders. Madeline, I'm gonna send it to you if you can forward to all CCEC members, also Alder Foster, that would be really good. And I'm gonna speak to my amendment. I like to move an amendment in which basically I'm trying to say and CCEC, sorry, not CCEC, the order should not be, uh, should not be sit on both chair or co-chair position. They can only sit on one chair, one position, either chair or either vice chair. And the second thing that amendment also talk about, uh, if in absence of community appointed people on a committee, if in their absence of leadership, if they wish not to be, uh, chair or co-chair, then order should be allowed. So there are two things in this amendment and I just sent to Madeline. And can I have second to that amendment so we can then debate?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Alder McKinney, please go ahead.
Alright, thank you. I almost missed this one. Um, I am not supportive of allowing an alder. Is that the one that we're on? I wanna make sure. Okay. Uh, I'm not in support of having an alder to serve on any board, committee or commission. And my reason being, initially, I had one reason for, for offering the original motion is because the there was only one, one board committee commission that had an alder to serve as chair, regardless regardless of the reasoning, uh, in terms of being equitable and consistent, I had a problem with that. Um, but as I even think deeper, my reasoning is, is that we have been encouraging um, um, public, um, participation. And that's been our focus, like how do we encourage public participation? How do we engage, uh, the, uh, community voices? How do we encourage constituents to, uh, to serve on boards, committees and commissions? And if in fact that that is our goal, um, so how do we start preparing and, um, and encouraging individuals to serve? And I think that having a, um, a, um, an alder serve in that position really does a detriment in, um, this way is one, if, um, uh, if a resident was on a board committee or commission and an alder, uh, was, alder's name was referred, um, I would say that, um, that resident may or may not step forward because they are going to ask, why? Why should I step forward? Because this person has more knowledge, more whatever that is. And so I think that those positions, those slots should be left open to residents um, and the public to serve on. We as alders, um, have a lot of weight and, um, I'm not saying that, um, you know, certain alders would abuse it, but, but that's not the case. It should be where we are encouraging and developing the pool of residents to serve on boards, committees and commissions. And that should not be, uh, an elected official. So I will not be supporting even the alternate.
Thank you, Alder McKinney. Alder Heck.
Thanks, President Abbas. I'm sorry, are we discussing the, an amendment, the alternate or the amendment? Okay. Um, could, could you explain that again? Sorry, I, I'm a little bit confused by what.
Sorry, I, I also did not did a good job explaining, so I'll give another try.
Thanks.
So the amendment is pretty similar to Alder Bennett amendment last time. That amendment basically allow alder to be a chair or a co-chair in absence of committee member, if they decide not to run for the chair and vice chair position, alder is allowed. So first opportunity will be given to the community member. The second thing in this amendment is added, the orders cannot take both position of chair or co-chair. Example, like plan commission, uh, so I'm just giving example of plan commission. In case of plan commission, if alder decide to be a chair and another order, because three of yous, three orders sit on that commission and second order decide to be a vice chair, then the orders are taking, you know, full control on the agenda items. So that amendment also only give opportunity for one order rather than two. So it's one order can be chair, either vice chair, and then the resident member have to be part of that leadership. So it's kind of like creating opportunity for making sure the opportunity is there for resident member.
Okay, thank you. I think I understand it now.
Perfect. So motion in front of us is move adoption of alternative as amended. Alder Foster.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, so this would also include the other, uh, kind of two key provisions of the alternate, which would be, um, it would, it would require elections of officers, uh, annually and also would allow, uh, BCCs to get items on the agenda, um, if, um, according to the language in there, correct? Those, those elements are still there, right?
Yep, those are still there, yeah.
Um, so I guess I'll just real quickly say, um, you know, I, I really appreciated the conversation last time. Um, it's clear to me that there are a number of folks that feel pretty strongly about trying to sort of carve out space for resident members to serve with officers. Um, I think my preference would still be to just leave it open and leave it to the BCCs and, and not, you know, put restrictions. But I'm also, um, willing to accept the, uh, this amendment as proposed. Uh, I think the other two components of this proposed change, in my mind, are perhaps even a little bit more critical. So I, I'm, I would be willing to support, uh, the, this as amended. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Weheli. You're muted.
Thank you, Chair, President Abbas. So basically what we are voting on the alternate is the, the priority is given to the residents. And should we have no resident who is interested in that leadership? Then the alder can, uh, take that role. Uh, and the other, um, second amendment for you is there can be two alders who will be serving as chair and co-chair, correct?
Yes, that's correct. And Attorney Haas is also here, I believe. Attorney Haas, would you, would you like to explain that?
Um, I'm sorry, explain the amendment or the?
Amendment.
Before, before I, uh, Attorney Haas jumps in, my, my question is what constitutes, uh, the resident not to be available? For example, if the mayor, um, uh, appoints resident, will the committee choose the residents in the committee as a chair? Are there timeline where if no one comes up, then we can give that position to the alders? So should there be a timeline or? I, I like, I like where this one is going, this is going, in addition to the limiting the chair to one year. But then what, what's the timeline in term of when an alder can jumps in for this leadership role? If there's any timeline?
Right, so, um, the language is a little bit general. I'll tell you what my understanding of it is, is that at the time of, at the time that the election is conducted, if no resident member steps forward and, and offers to serve as chair, that's where the decision is made. Then there's an election. If there's no resident member put forward as a candidate, then alders could run for those offices. And then if a resident member, five months later says, oh, I'd like to be chair, they, they don't get to step in. The election takes place. The person is, uh, chosen, is entitled to serve out their term. With the caveat being that, you know, a body can always choose to remove his chair, but that's kind of a separate. You'd have to first remove the chair and then elect somebody else. But absent that, I took the intent of the amendment to be it's at the time that the election takes place that you determine whether resident member um, is available and willing to serve, um, as an officer. And if, if the intent is anything, you know, different than that, we can certainly clarify, but that's the way I, I understood it.
Alder Weheli, do you have other question? You're muted.
Yes, I don't know if this is a question or just amending what's on, on, in front of us, but what I'm thinking is perhaps give the alder the vice chair while we are finding out the chair for the community member. I don't know if that could be an amendment or if that's something that we can, uh, use. But giving the priority as the vice chair for the alder and then giving the, uh, the chair to the residents. So because sometimes when the residents are appointed, it takes time to understand the committee and it's hard for them just to come upfront and take that leadership role. But I think having the alder as a vice chair, that will pass time to engage the community and to be part of the, uh, the, uh, the leadership role. So I, I don't know what that language will look like, or that's an amendment, or, but that's my comment.
So, so Alder Weheli, what I'm understanding, you would like to make an amendment rather than that language about chair and vice chair, you want to make, you want to make a proposal like alders can only be sit as a vice chair, not the chair of the committee?
Correct.
Attorney Haas, uh, uh, so we already have amendment on alternative. Can Alder Weheli do an amendment on, on, on that? You're muted.
Sorry, the way I would look at this is that, that is not really an amendment to the original amendment, that's amending the, the basic language, the original proposal. Um, and so I would recommend first voting on Alder Abbas, Abbas's amendment and then figuring out where to go from that in an additional amendment um, could be offered after that time, depending on how the vote goes.
Right. If there is no further discussion or question, let's take a vote on, uh, on amendment. Is there any objection for unanimous consent? Alder Weheli, you, you would like to do a roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Madeline, could you please do a roll call?
Yes, President Abbas.
Aye.
Vice President Martin.
Aye.
Alder Bennett.
Aye.
Alder Harrington McKinney.
Could you come back to me, please?
Absolutely. Uh, Alder Heck.
Aye.
Alder Lummer is excused. Alder Weheli.
No.
And, uh, back to Alder Harrington McKinney.
Aye.
And Madeline, you also need to ask Alder Carter because Alder Lummer is absent, so she's a voting member there.
My apologies, Alder Carter. Alder Carter.
That's okay, Madeline. Um, aye.
Uh, six, two, one, aye to no, uh, amending the alternative passes.
So the amendment is passed. Now in front of us is the alternative as amended. Alder Weheli, do you want to make a motion now?
Say it again.
Do you, do you wish to make a motion now?
If the, the motion passed, right?
So the amendment pass of alternatives. Do you wish to do your motion in which you were saying?
Yes.
So you're, you want to do a motion, correct?
Yes, to have the, uh, the vice chair only.
Alder can only sit for a vice chair, not for the chair of the committee?
Yes.
Okay, so there is a motion, Alder can only sit for a vice chair, not as a chair of a committee. Is there any?
Second.
Okay, second questions. I have a one question for Attorney Haas. So Attorney Haas, the motion in front of his, uh, uh, chair and vice chair, what if they are co-chairs? Some committees also have co-chairs, then what?
Well, I think that, if, uh, I think then an alder could not serve as a co-chair, um, they could serve as a vice chair and just looking at, you know, I'm trying to look at exactly what the specific language would be, um. Um. I guess, you know, we, I have the language, I believe, of what was just passed, but I'm not sure where, if that was just to be added as a new subdivision of the ordinance. But we should, we should figure out what the specific language is gonna be for Alder Weheli's proposal. Right now it says no alder shall be the chair, co-chair or vice chair except when it's not filled by a non-alder member of the subunit. So that could just, um. We need to just settle on language. I guess it should be, um, no alder, it could be no alder shall serve as the chair of any subunit. And then we could modify this existing language to say no alder may serve as vice chair except when the position is not filled by a non-alder member of the subunit.
Alder Weheli, could you please work on an email with Attorney Haas? Could you please send that to Alder Weheli? Could you work while I can take comments from Alder Foster?
Thank you.
The language. I appreciate that. Alder Foster.
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, I mean, as I mentioned last time, I'm not as enthusiastic about the, the your previous restriction, but kind of willing to along with it in the spirit of, of supporting, you know, residents to take these roles. Um, I, I am not, I'm, I'm less enthusiastic about adding another layer that I think all of us trying to tease apart and understand. I anticipate this is gonna cause BCC election. You have to be explaining what can and can't happen and at the end, I actually think Alder Weheli's, um, scenario that you put out there, I, I can see that, right? Where you've got a sort of newcomer to the body, they don't have enough experience in BCCs. Would be fun to consider kind of stepping up, but feel comfortable like, like maybe kind of get some support. In that scenario, I actually think it would make more sense if, if the alder were chair and this person were vice chair so they could sort of watch and learn, fill in once or twice when, when they're gone. But in, you know, in that position, I don't think, I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna be basically, the whole concept is we're forcing them to be chair, which is gonna, is sort of the, the part where they have to know Robert's rules. They gotta be speaking every meeting, they gotta be, you know, making all the calls. And I'm, I don't think that having an alder vice chair is gonna actually be, like at least during the meetings, isn't gonna be a lot of support. Well, in, I, I guess in my mind, if the goal is really to try and encourage and support residents to take these leadership roles, I, it almost makes more sense to go the other way and, um, allow residents to be vice chairs until they get their feet on themselves and then for chair the next time. So I, I don't, I don't think I support this. And I think if we lay too many layers on here, it's just gonna turn this into some nonsense and I, I don't know. I mean, I I don't think we should go this deep.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Weheli. You're muted. Do you want me to come back to you?
Yes, come back, come back to me because what, I'm trying to understand the, uh, what's in front of us and what we have voted on. However, you know, it says, you know, the first priority is given to the residents as the chair. And then the, that, that's my amendment, and the second, uh, opportunity is given to the, uh, to the, uh, uh, to the alder. I don't agree that the chair should be given to the alder first and then the co-chair should be given to the, to the residency because, you know, we're giving and empowering the residents to, to be in leadership position. So I'm, I'm working on the, uh, the language, so hopefully I can send something to Attorney Haas.
Alder McKinney.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, one of the things that, uh, we are committed to is training and development of residents so that we can expand the resident base. Um, and if that is true, um, there is no training or preparation to serve as a chair. Uh, it doesn't mean that even an alder would be in that position, but that's not the case. The case is, is that we, the, the case is, is that we are looking to train, develop and expand the base of residents to serve on boards, committees and commissions. That's what we need. I mean, the, you know, the alders carry a lot of weight already. And what I'm supporting is, is that, and I, I like the tweaking of the amendment in terms of the position of chair, um, is relegated to, um, residents only. And the vice chair can be, um, and, and I'm going to adjust that, the vice chair could serve, um, the, the alder could serve as vice chair. Um, that's an amendment, I'm friendly and I would go with it, but I just wanna say, and let's be very clear, is, is that if we are hiring, um, and we are talking about building community engagement, we have to put our money where, we have to, we have to be consistent with that. The training, development and expanding, uh, the capacity of residents to serve in those positions is something that we're committed to. Do we have that yet? No. Do we need to put that in place? Yes. But when we're looking at an ordinance, an ordinance is firm. I mean, it's, it, once we put that into place, that is firm, that's commitment, and that's what we have to do. So I would like to, to have that consideration that the position as chair of any board, committee or commission be relegated or, uh, for, um, for a resident. No alder should serve in that position, but it does leave the position open as vice chair. I, I, and I'm hoping that that language is, um, very clear. I'm not, um, comfortable with all the other languages that if, uh, if there, no one steps up and that's just, I don't think, I think that that's confusing. That's a layer that does not need to be there. It should be very clear, very succinct, and that added layer, if no resident steps up, then that's just added conversation and I don't think that that's, that needs to be in there.
Thank you, Alder McKinney. I will also just remind the committee, we have really packed agenda and one hour left. Alder Carter, please go ahead.
Um, oh, thank you. I was just gonna say that the truth of the matter is not every alder knows Robert's rules or how to conduct a meeting. Uh, this is where training comes in. And therefore, uh, we can't say that a resident doesn't know it when most of us don't know it. Training has to be part of this. And I do think we need to empower our residents to be chairs and to provide, and to provide them with the training that's necessary if they don't have it already. Thank you.
I really appreciate your short comment, Alder Carter. With that, Alder Weheli, is your motion is in order? Do you have the language in front of you? You're muted.
Yes, I, I think Attorney Haas sent me, uh, modified one, but it doesn't still, uh, it doesn't still says what I want to say. But basically, I don't know what the language, but basically what I'm saying is in the event of no resident, uh, you know, the, the only position that alder, alders can take part in the BCC is vice chair. I don't know which language I can, I can do that. That, that's my intent.
Attorney Haas, could you please help us here?
Sure.
Yeah, that's the only intent is no alders should be chair or co-chair. The only time that they can be in a leadership role is vice chair. That's my intent.
And is that, oh, is there the restriction of that can only take place if a non-alder is not available?
Yes.
Okay, so I think what I said would work, so I, I just proposed adding at the beginning of the amendment that was passed, a sentence that says no other person shall be the chairperson or a co-chairperson of any subunit. And then in the next sentence, just striking chairperson and co-chairperson, so it says no other person shall be vice chairperson of any subunit um, except where the office is not filled by a non-alder member of the subunit. And then striking the next sentence that says that alders cannot serve as chair or vice, and, and vice chair at the same time because that would not be a possibility.
Okay, that should be fine.
Can you send that to English to Ald, can you send that language to our, uh, I'm saying Alder Madeline? Can you send this to Madeline, please, so she can forward to all of us, including Alder Foster, please?
Madeline, could you send it to my personal email? Cause I'm locked out right now.
Uh, uh, just so the committee knows, uh, I, I cannot get the strike through to work on my email so the, the language that would be struck is highlighted and then there's underlined language that I've added. So the, the language that would be struck is highlighted. And then there's underline language that I've added.
Madeline, did you get?
Yes, I've, I've gotten your email. I'm gonna be forwarding it to the alders. Um, Alder Bennett, if you could send me your personal email, um, so I can forward it to as well. That would be wonderful.
Um, where can I send it? Sorry.
Madeline, I can send it to you.
Thank you, Stefan.
Aldo Carter, do you have any? Attorney Haas, go ahead.
I was just gonna suggest that, uh, you know, maybe we should also specify that this would be in thirty-three point oh one seven D. It would just be a new, we'd be putting that language that was struck back in the ordinance, but as seven D instead of seven B.
You know, part of me really think we should refer it again. And elders can work with Aldo Foster and Attorney Haas and come back rather than we do wanna fly. But if, if the will of the committee feel like we can do right now, then we should just do it right now.
I call for the vote.
So, Madeline, quick question. I'm having a hard time to track where we are. So we passed the amendment on alternative. Did Aldo Raheli did motion and there was a second?
Yes, I believe the second was from Alder Harrington McKinney.
McKinney. Okay, and the language is in front of us and call. Let's do a roll call vote then.
Okay. Uh, President Abbas?
Aye.
Vice President Martin?
I'm sorry, I hate to do this. We are voting on the, the, the resolution as amended, correct?
Amended by Aldo Raheli.
Okay. Okay, um.
This is only on Aldo Raheli's.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. No.
Alder Bennett?
Um, can you come back? I just need time to read it.
Absolutely. Uh, Alder Harrington McKinney?
Aye.
Alder Heck?
No.
Alder Lummer is excused. Aldo Raheli?
Aye.
Aldo Carter?
I'm sorry, um, I had to step away. Can you tell me where we're at?
We are um voting on Aldo Raheli's um amendment.
Aye.
And uh, back to you, Alder Bennett?
No.
And Madeline, can you also do my vote change to no as well, please?
Absolutely. Um, then a vote along lines of four to three, uh, the noes had it, Aldo Raheli's amendment does not pass.
All right, we will back to the main motion as alternative amended, as alternative. Uh, is there any objection to call? Perhaps there is objection. So let's do a roll call vote again. So motion in front of us is move approval of alternative version two as amended by uh, Aldo Abbas. Attorney Haas.
And again, can we just clarify that that additional language would be included as seven D? In the ordinance?
Yes. Okay. Aldo McKinney?
Uh, would you please ask, I mean, uh, ask, um, old, um, Attorney Haas to read what's before us?
Attorney Haas, could you please do that?
Well, the entire ordinance? I mean, we, we, this is Aldo Foster's.
No, ju- just the part that where um, uh, President Abbas is made. Yeah.
Sure. Um, so this is what's already been incorporated into the resolu- into the ordinance. Uh, no alder shall be the chair, co-chair, or vice chair of any subunit. Authorized to have more than two resident members appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council, except where an office is not filled by a non-alder member of the subunit. In no event shall others serve as both chair and vice chair at the same, of the same subunit at the same time. Uh, then we have the other language, existing language. Um, uh, in, in the event the resident chair and vice chair are absent from a meeting and all their upon consensus of the members present, may assume the chair, however, in no event shall an alder serve as chair of any such subunit for more than two consecutive meetings.
Aldo Foster.
Yeah, I get just that last sentence that you said. I think it's from that original language and it seems to potentially conflict. So it probably needs to be further clarified to say in the circumstance that they're filling in temporarily, they can't do it for more than two, right? Cause it says in circumstance.
I think maybe we just say, however, in that, in that case, um, no, i- in that case, no alder shall serve as chair of any such subunit for more than two consecutive meetings.
Just drag it all together because if that is happening, it's because somebody doesn't, isn't stepping up, which is essentially what is being allowed, right? So I, I don't know. You got to figure it out.
I, I mean, it is a good point. That was in the existing ordinance. Um, you know, we brought back different language that was focused on serving as permanent chair, not serving in a temporary capacity.
I, I, I think so. We should strike that down. It's, it doesn't make sense a lot, that language there. Create more confusion, to be honest, just reading. So Attorney Haas, so now to strike that language down, do we need to do another amendment?
I, I think you do need an amendment.
Okay, I would like to move an amendment to strike down the language. However, in no event shall an alder serve as a chair or any subcommittee for more than two consecutive meetings.
Second.
Then seconded. Let's go. Any question for Attorney Haas? All right, let's go with Aldo Raheli, go ahead.
So the original language was not to uh, serve uh, as a chair, not more than two consecutive um, meetings, right? But now we are allowing them to be chair however they want. Is that correct, Attorney Haas?
Or if there's no, if there's no
No limitation.
If there's no resident member, then an alder can serve as chair. And then also, if there is a resident member and a resident, I mean, a resident chair and a resident vice chair, but they are absent, then elders could serve as chair and there would not be a limit on how many meetings they could do that.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Right. Aldo Raheli, thank you. Uh, Madeline, can we please do a roll call?
Um, President Abbas?
Aye.
Vice President Martin?
No.
Alder Bennett?
I'm, I'm so sorry. I keep getting myself confused today. So, so we're, we're, we're voting on the passing this or, I, I'm, I'm sorry. What are we voting on?
Attorney Haas?
This is only on the amendment to strike the language. However, in no event shall an alder serve as chair of any such, such, such subunit for more than two consecutive meetings.
Okay, can you just come back to me?
Absolutely. Um, Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
Alder Heck?
Aye.
Alder Lummer is excused. Aldo Raheli?
Aldo Raheli will mute it. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I, I.
Hi, all right. Aldo Carter?
Can you come back to me?
Yep, for sure. Um, back to you, Alder Bennett?
Wait. So this is to vote on whether an alder can serve for two consecutive meetings? I- is this striking the original language that we were just talking about?
No, it's just striking the language of however. However, in no event shall an alder serve as a chair of any such subunit for more than two consecutive meetings. That's the only language we are taking out. And the reason is in case if the chair and vice chair is not there for two or three meetings, it doesn't make sense to strike alder down. They can be chair until then, they come back. Correct, Aldo, uh, Aldo Haas, sorry, Attorney Haas.
That's correct.
Okay, um, well, um, based on that, Aldo Haas, um, I guess, um, I, I, um, yes? Or wait, yes.
Recorded as an aye? Okay. Alder Bennett, aye. Um, back to you, Aldo Carter?
Aye. I would also like to change mine. This is Aldo Martin. I'd like to change my vote to an aye as well. I got to look at it more. Thank you.
Okay. On a vote of six to one, ayes to noes, um, this amendment to strike the language passes.
Yes. All right. Now, there's a motion in front of us, a pause alternative version two as amended. Madeline, can you do a roll call? Aldo Raheli, do you have uh, any comments? Your hand is raised. Now we are, everybody, just to be clear, we are on a main motion as amended. Madeline, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, President Abbas?
Aye.
Uh, Vice President Martin?
Aye.
Uh, Alder Bennett?
Yes.
Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
Aldo Heck?
Aye.
Aldo Lummer is excused. Aldo Raheli?
Aye.
And Aldo Carter? You're muted. One more time, Aldo Carter, you're muted.
Aye.
Uh, a vote of six to one, um, approval of alternative two as amended, uh, passes.
Thank you. Motion pass. We will move to next agenda item number three, latest legislative file number six, seven, three, seven, three, repeal section. Thirty-three point five three of Madison internal ordinance to eliminate the digital technology committee. Can I please have a motion?
Uh, move recommending, uh, is it, is it disbandment? Um, or, or
Adoption.
Yeah. There you go. Yeah.
Second, Aldo Raheli. Move motion seconded. Uh, Aldo Foster, would you like to speak to that? Oh, sorry, not Foster. Aldo Fermin, my mistake.
Thank you, Council President. Um, this is a committee that I was very excited about, uh, when I uh, became an alder. And unfortunately, um, it's a committee that has, uh, throughout the time I've been alder, has struggled to find a purpose, has struggled to have quorum, and now it's struggled to actually have members. Um, we have multiple members that, um, uh, were part of it and uh, did not, did not wish to be, uh, their terms expired, did not wish to be reappointed. Um, we've had members that are currently on it that have resigned. Um, the committee's primary focus has, has tried to be on uh, digital uh, equity and digital inclusion. Um, but quite frankly, there's just no work for this particular committee to be working on. So um, in its um, current um, structure, on its current definition, it's just a committee that's unfortunately not very useful. Um, and so I've put this forward. Um, we're looking at redoing committees. It's my hope that we can figure out some place um, for uh, digital technology to exist, because I do think this serves an important purpose. Um, I think there are a lot of things that go on in the city that, that uh, related to digital technology um, and city services, et cetera, that a committee could focus on. Um, but just in its current state, it doesn't make sense for this committee to exist. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions, um, but that's why I put this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Aldo Raheli, question for the staff?
Who, who, who's in the staff? Can I ask question?
I don't think so. Anybody from I T is here. Uh, but go ahead, ask question. Let's see if Aldo Fermin or somebody else could help us.
Yes, so my, my question is, uh, what was the intent of the commission or committee? And why there's lack of engagement or participation uh, without, um, you know, having, without knowing the, the root causes of why there's no engagement in the committee. I, I don't think it's, it's a it's, it's wise to, just to dissolve the committee. We are working in uh, streamlining the B C C uh, at some, uh, some point in the future from T F A G, as well as the uh, President Work Group for Social Justice Equity and Anti-Racism. This could be a place that we can be able to look into in the long run to see which committees, commission, or board are not really functioning well. And that will be a, a place that we can talk about more. Thank you.
Thanks, Aldo Raheli. Uh, I will also say a few things too as well. Uh, so we have similar situation of city-county homeless committee. And the C C C decided, if we all remember earlier this year and during time of Aldo Carter, to look into in case of it's dead dissolve, who's gonna take in charge and how the issue's gonna be addressed. I think so with this also similar, uh, perhaps Aldo Fermin can help. Issues relate, related to digital technology or literacy or problem with equity, especially related to internet. I don't know what else scope of this committee is, who could really answer that? I'm just curious to hear if Aldo Fermin, if you wish to give an answer. I appreciate that.
Sure. I mean, I could add some, some additional information. I mean, so the, the ordinance has, uh, if you look at the, uh, this repeal, um, it, it has a copy of what's in the ordinance. And like every committee definition, um, there's duties. And so if you look at, um, you know, three, three dot five, three, four, um, that the duties of the commi- the committee is defined there um, with what it, what, what, what it's been tasked with. Um, I will be quite honest, there are people that read this in many different ways. Um, the way that this particular definition was set up, um, it doesn't have a lot of clarity, in my opinion. It says a lot of words, um, but ultimately has been focused um, and, and, and I T's um, charge uh, in staffing, it has been focused on digital equity. I think there are other committees that exist that could focus on this, this better. Um, I will say right now, there's only two members of this committee. Um, every other member has expired and um, and one member, uh, which is the chair has resigned. And so the two members of this committee are myself and one resident member. If you look at the definition of the committee, um, it's supposed to have nine members. Um, so it's, it's completely been, I mean, it, you know, so if, if C C C decides to recommend not to dissolve this, it doesn't matter. This committee doesn't exist. Um, I, I, you know, I, I, you know, I recognize that there's gonna be a process to look at this more. I think a comparison of city-county committee is, is unfair, because the city-county committee has a lot of connections based on the lease agreement that it comes with the city. And when that came in front of C C C, um, it was pretty clear that the lease was not resolved on how to figure out how any of those issues would be resolved. Um, if, if that committee didn't exist. Um, so I don't think it's necessarily a fair comparison. I'll, I'll be quite honest, if this committee again decides not to, not to dissolve this, I don't think it matters much. This committee, you know, functionally doesn't exist. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Aldo Fermin, my intent was not to compare. Uh, it was just a policy to see and for us as a C C C to decide how we have to deal with overall committees of City of Madison. By the city-county or this committee or future committees, when it comes to us, we have to make a policy to see and uh, how we proceed. Either dissolve it or do we need to find a mechanism to address. So just for clarity point of view, it was not a apple to oranges comparison. Uh, any further discussion? Aldo Carter? You're muted.
Was anyone from IT on this committee?
No, IT, IT staffed this committee, but they were not on this committee. But that, we had several members from the IT Department, three actually. It would be, uh, Sarah Edgerton, Amanda, and, um, I can't remember, why can I not remember, um, uh, the other gentleman's name? But, but it certainly had plenty of representation by the IT Department there.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so the motion of us is to repeal this, uh, committee and there's a second. Any objection to record unanimous vote? Alright, I don't see any hand raised, so it is, motion is approved. We will move forward to next, next agenda item, agenda item number four, Legislative File Number Six Seven Five Seven Three, substitute amending section two-point-zero-one-four and thirty-three-point-zero-one-one-B of the Madison General Ordinance is to clarify prohibited meeting dates. Can I please have a motion?
Move recommendation to, um, adopt.
Can I have a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any questions for the staff or comment? Aldo Furman, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. I am, I am incredibly grateful, uh, for this, um, uh, update of, of this ordinance. Um, uh, so, so thank you for those who worked on it. Um, wanted to at least put this point out for, uh, members of this committee to, to consider. Um, both, uh, the Rosh Hashanah holiday as well as Yom Kippur, both those holidays start the night, the evening before. And so if, if one were to be, uh, knowledgeable of those holidays, they know that. Um, but I do see that this ordinance now does call out the idea of saying the evening before, um, the, the new holiday that's being added. And, and so I'm just wondering if there is value in adding that phrase, um, of the evening before. Um, so it's, it's clearer in ordinance form and written form that, that that's what the case is. Again, the definition of Yom Kippur is, is, does include the evening before, but I'm not sure how clear that would be to people. So that would just be my, my suggestion for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo Furman. Is there any objection to add that language in the ordinance? Attorney Haas, do we need to do motion to add that language?
Yes, we do.
Alright, I, I just saw Aldo Foster head. Alright. Uh, so we will do that motion. Go ahead, uh, Vice President Martin, do a motion.
Oh, I was going, I was going to move that we include language on this. Um, as Aldo Furman stated, to note that the holidays of, um, what is it, Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur are, uh, start the night before. And we should take that into consideration during our meetings. So that's my motion. Thank you, Aldo Furman.
It's moved and seconded, Aldo Carter. You're muted.
Thank you. I, I was just wondering. I had it up and then I lost it. Um, well, let me just put it out there. We are, we're also adding two additional holidays onto this. And I'm just, um, maybe Aldo Rahila can answer that. Does that need to be the evening before too?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Attorney Haas?
Uh, well, as written, it, it only says the evening before and the day of the first holiday. Aldo Rahila can correct my pronunciation, but Eid al-Fitr?
Eid, Eid al-Fitr and Eid al-Adha.
Thank you. The second one, it does not specify the evening before.
Should be there too.
Okay.
Alright, Attorney Haas, do you mind, uh, working with Madeline and add that language as substitute? So she can add, uh, in the legislature?
Yep.
With that understanding of evening before, uh, could we have, uh, I will consider as unanimous approval unless there is objection. I don't see any hand raised, so the motion is approved. The, now we are back on substitute version two as amended on the main motion. Is there any objection to record unanimous vote? I don't see any hand raised, so I will record as unanimous vote. Thank you very much. We move forward to agenda item number five, Legislative File Number Six Seven Six Three Seven, amending section two-point-zero-five-two, uh, A-one, two-point-zero-five-B-one, two-point-zero-five-B-six, and three-three-point-zero-one-eleven-A, remembering two-point-two-four, two-point-zero-five, and repeating two-point-zero-fives, two-point-zero-five and two-two-two-five of the Madison General Ordinance to clarify the process for introduction and referral. Can I please have a motion?
I, uh, move recommending to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Attorney Haas, your hand is raised.
Sorry about that.
No worries. Alright, any questions or comments? I do not see any hand raised. I will just say as a, as a Alder and as a Chair, I really appreciate Aldo Foster for working on this and bringing forward in front of CCEC. This looks pretty good to me. So I really appreciate the effort, especially streamlining our referral process. So I appreciate that. Aldo Rahila, your hand was raised?
No.
Alright, if there is no objection, can I record as unanimous vote? Alright, I don't see any hand raised, so this is recorded as unanimous. Alright, moving to agenda item number six, Legislative File Number Six Seven Six Three Eight, amending section two-point-three-zero-two of Madison General Ordinance to change that time limit for a speaker at a public meeting. We have one registrant to speak on that meeting. Okay, I lost the file. Here we go. Emily Merritt, Creekwood Lane, Madison, Wisconsin, in opposition and wish to speak.
It looks like no one by that name is with us tonight.
Alright, she's not, that person is not here. Can we please have a motion?
Move recommending approval.
Motion is moved. Can I have a?
Second to approve.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, question or comments? I do not see any hand raised. With that, I will consider as unanimous approval unless I see any hand raised. I don't see any hand raised, so it's approved. We will move to the next agenda item, agenda item number seven, Legislative File Number Six Seven Six Nine Zero, adopting APM two-dash-five-three COVID-nineteen vaccination testing policy to apply to all Alders. Can I have a motion, please?
Move recommendation to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? Aldo Foster, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I guess first I'll just say I, I, I agree with and appreciate the concept of requiring this of, of Alders as we do of employees. I guess my question's maybe for Attorney Haas. Um, this seems to kind of touch on a, a previous discussion we had at council around APMs and their applicability. And I understand the resolution saying, you know, it, it sort of adopts the, the content of. When I go to the, to the APM, however, there's a number of references. I mean, obviously it's, it's saying employees, so we can just assume it's, you know, it means Alder instead. There's different places, um, I mean, like the deadline section obviously is referencing October first. Theoretically, when we adopt it, we're like, not in compliance or like, you know, how, what is the startup time for Alders? Um, to have accomplished, um, seems like we should maybe set, uh, an actual deadline. Um, there's like references to supervisors. Uh, I think one section says you have to give cash results to your media supervisor or the agency designated contact. So I'm sure we could, you know, just choose somebody in the council office as a designated contact, which we should probably do. But then, um, in other sections, it only references like the positive bill, um, so it has to go to their supervisor. Uh, I think all these things are like things that we can get over, but then, and then later on, it's talking about like the city will review things and human resources and any of these kind of exemption sort of things. And then like ultimately it gets to the point where if there are issues, it could result in disciplinary action, including separation. And the HR director is the one that interprets the policy. So it just like, there's so much stuff that seems to like not quite fit. And I'm wondering if we couldn't, shouldn't do a different kind of resolution that says this is our expectation, but that is kind of deals with the reality of the fact that we're and I don't think we can really get fired for a vaccine. Um, so I guess, any, any thoughts you have on that?
Yeah, I think those are good points. I think there's a couple of options. Um, first of all, as far as an effective date, you know, this would not, this would go into effect sometime next week if the council passes it and after the council proceedings are approved. Um, it, it, it may be that, you know, one way to approach it is for the council to direct staff to tailor this APM to the council to clean up those issues. If you wanted it to come back and maybe have a cleaner policy you could look at. Or if you just wanna, you know, pass this one and leave it up to the staff to, to administer it. Because you're right, there are provisions that just will not apply to, to Alders as they are written.
Yeah, thank you for, for that. I mean, I'll, you all to kind of discuss it and think what you want to do. Um, again, I'm, I'm, I'm on board with the concept and I think it's, it's good. We should sort of set that expectation for ourselves. I think probably that last point is the one that's the most sort of troubling. And, I mean, I think we either need to, like, is there gonna be a review process if somebody is refusing? Or are we just gonna say you're, we're disappointed in you and, oh, like chastisement or? I mean, I think at least that we should probably just like, figure out what our, what our goal is, or I don't know. I, I think it would be worth cleaning it up a little bit at least, uh, cause it just, I think there's enough, enough elements that just don't quite fit. It, I think it'd be better if we, if we tweaked it a little bit to ourselves. Thanks.
Thanks, Aldo Foster. Aldo Carter?
Yes, I, I, after I read it, I was going to, uh, recommend that we do something separate for the council office and directly address, uh, the Alders and this situation. I, again, I, uh, definitely support, um, the concept of this as Aldo Foster said earlier. Um, we all have, uh, senior people in our families that we have to protect. And some of us have small children. And other of us might have friends and relatives that have health conditions. And, and in addition to that, we want to protect each other. So I would like to see, um, the Attorney's Office to draft something that's more in line and with the council office versus just adding, um, the APM to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Aldo Furman.
Uh, thank you, Council President. I'll, um, just, just, uh, start by echoing, uh, uh, both Alder Carter and Aldo Foster. Um, but also ask a, a question of Attorney Haas. Is there any ability for us to, to, to maybe make this a little bit more, um, enforceable? And maybe denying access to the building to unvaccinated Alders? Um, because obviously there is no disciplinary action that can be taken against an Alder who, who decides not to, uh, follow this procedure. Um, and when I echo, uh, uh, Alder Carter and, and Aldo Foster, I'm fully vaccinated and, and support vaccination mandates. Um, but, you know, to, to make this a little bit stronger, is there any ability to say, you know, you can't come into, you know, uh, uh, a, a meeting or, or, or city building without following some sort of policy like this?
Well, uh, uh, two things, I think. I don't, I don't know that that's something that public health would really support. And it's not even the case for employees. Employees, um, if they're not vaccinated, they go through testing on a weekly basis under this APM. So as long as they're have, have a negative test, they would still be able to come to, come to work.
Sure, sure, but could that then be focused on the idea that if an Alder decides not to get vaccinated and also not to get tested, therefore violating, you know, a, a big chunk of what this APM says? Could, could there then be a denial of allowing, uh, that individual, um, to how come into, you know, a public, uh, public space, um, and, and endanger the lives of others?
If, if they don't do either one, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I think that's kind of crossing over into public health territory that I'm not qualified to comment on whether or not that, I mean, uh, could you make that a rule? Legally, I'm not sure if you can, you know, bar an Alder from a public building for that. I think at the very least, you'd probably have to have some public health justification for that. And I'm just not sure what public health would say about that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Aldo Furman. Aldo Heck?
President Abbas, I'd like to make a substitute motion when it's appropriate.
Please go ahead.
I'd, I'd like to, uh, move that we refer to this to the next, uh, CCEC meeting so that sponsors can work on some of the issues we've addressed.
I will second.
At least.
Motion is moved and seconded. Aldo Foster, go ahead.
Uh, just one thought as folks are working on that, um, in channeling some of what I think we, we learned when we were talking about APM applicability. Um, perhaps the, the, the biggest or the best and the safest consequence is sort of being public about the fact that an Alder is refusing to do it. I mean, obviously we're not gonna disclose like medical information, but I think if, if an Alder fails to, to do this and refuses to, you know, do one of the other pathways, you know, perhaps i- i- in the past, I think what we kind of landed on in terms of discipline is the, the voters are the boss and so making sure that there's, that there's information out there. So maybe just something for the sponsors to consider when you're thinking about what that, um, you know, what, what the stick is at the end of it.
Thanks. Aldo McKinney?
Um, I, I am not supporting shaming anyone. I mean, if there's some checks and balances that the, um, authors can put in place, then, um, then yes, do that. But publicly shaming someone, I will never support that. And, um, that's not where we want to land. That's not where I want to land.
Thanks, Aldo McKinney. Aldo Bennett?
Yeah, I'll just second what Aldo McKinney just said. Just because, I don't know. I, I mean, I could imagine a situation where an Alder, or, or not even just an Alder, but I'm, I'm certain there are situations where people who want to get vaccinated can't just because of medical concerns. Um, so I, I don't, I don't know. I don't know if there are any Alders or any people in, in the city that uh, fall under that, fall into that situation. Um, but I don't know. I think the public would take care of it itself. And we don't need to like, help them out with that.
Thanks, Aldo Bennett. Aldo Foster?
Yeah, just real quickly, I want to clarify that this, the policy lays out a suite of alternatives that you can get vaccinated or you can get tested and you have these different things. What I was stating, an, an in-app policy, an ultimate consequence could be getting fired from your job. And what my point is that we, we can't do that with Alders, which is part of what needs to get resolved. And so to adopt a policy that has no consequence at the end, at the end, also doesn't make a ton of sense to me. So I think if, if the goal, I guess what I, what I was suggesting is having that information public that an Alder refuses to follow and adopted policy that we pass does seem like one potential consequence, but I'll, I'll leave that up to the sponsors to consider.
Thank you, Aldo Foster. Uh, we, we will staff and the sponsor, including myself, we will work on that and also include public health in that discussion. I think so there's quite a bit of area of public health and we will bring it back to CCEC. But it's good to know a broader support for that APM. Any further discussion? On a referral motion? I do not see any hand raised, so I will consider as unanimous approval unless I see any objection. I don't see. Perfect. With that, can I have a, Aldo Carter, go ahead? You're muted.
I thought there was a substitute from attorney, up from, sorry, Aldo Heck, I upgraded you to Attorney Heck. Um, I thought he did a substitute before the amendment. I thought he did a substitute before the amendment.
You are correct. Alder Heck said substitute to refer, but I, I believe he meant to say he want to refer this to next CCEC, correct?
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
It's one of those nights. Alright, I appreciate that. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Move adjournment.
Can we have a second?
Second.
Perfect. Move and seconded. The meeting is adjourned. See you guys soon at six thirty. Bye.